We will call to order this Pearland City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, June 13th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. If you will, rise and we'll have our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance will be by Councilmember Coza and I'll lead us in our invocation. You'll bow with me. Heavenly Father, we just want to come and stop and take just a moment to invite you to be a part of our proceedings tonight, to go before us, to protect us, deliberate as we deliberate the business of the city. Father, I just ask that each one of us, both here at the council as well as the public, just remember this is a business meeting and we discuss the very serious issues of our community. Father, as always, we ask that you continue to protect all of our first responders here in Pearland, those that work for our city and our county, as well as those who are protecting our nation, not only here on our soil, but those that are abroad. Father, just again, be with us through these proceedings tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. I can certify that we do have a quorum present. All members are present with the exceptions of Member Berry and Member Owens, both of which will be absent from the chamber the remainder of the evening. Now moving to citizens' comments, I believe we have one. It's a general comment or on a specific general comment. All right. Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy Davis, one and only registered. If you would give your name, address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsell Street, Pearland. Gentlemen, I appreciate I saw that y'all been spending a lot of time talking about ethics. As a taxpayer that pays for councilmen to go on various, you know, conferences, whatnot, in your official capacity, I would ask y'all consider a rule that says if any councilman is going on one of these conferences that's paid for by our tax dollars, they shouldn't be allowed to use the access to that conference to market their business. Period. It's happened in the past and I don't think it's right. If you're going to go on a taxpayer-funded trip, don't enrich yourself from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Good comments. Moving forward in our agenda, we have our public hearing. First up will be our staff. If I'm not sure who's presenting, John, if you'll, staff member will present the item, the reason for it, and then move into your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the City Council. Mohammed Burke, Community Development. The first item that we have on the agenda is a request for a conditional use permit for dwelling industrialized home used within the Garden O'Day Mixed Use District on approximately 11 acres of land located at 2336 Garden Road. This is the location of the property. Again, it's located on Garden O'Day, Garden Road. It is surrounded by mixed uses. From the north side, you have a storage warehouse. On the east side, residential as well as a commercial development. On the south side is undeveloped, as well as the west side. This is the future land use plan and it has the property designated for mixed use district as well. This is overall site plan, shows the location of the proposed house. Again, it's an industrialized home. It's also known as modular home and it's being proposed on this side and it requires a CUP in this district. This is the floor plan of the proposed house, approximately 1,600 square feet. And here's some elevations of that proposed modular home. And these are street views taken from Garden Road looking directly towards the subject property. Planning Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing and also discussed this request at their regular meeting on May 16. And during that public hearing, there were no speakers for, again, this request. And all of the commissioners stated that they would approve this or vote for this request. Again, we have not received any public respondents, any public comments on this request. And that's, that's staff report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mohammed. Moving, is the applicant present? Okay. Do you have a presentation or anything? Just, but you're here for questions if we have them. Perfect. All right. Thank you for that. We'll move forward to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, give your name and address and can speak for three minutes. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll move it to City Council for questions, comments, concerns from councilmembers. Anyone? Remember Coza?
Yes, I wanted to find out as far as the pre-manufactured home, the codes that apply to building and construction, is it basically the same type of codes to construction? It's just a modular home being brought in fabricated somewhere else?
Counselmember, thank you for the question. I'm going to defer. Lawrence Provence has researched this issue and I'm going to allow him to answer that question. Thank you.
Member Coza, I know you said pre-manufactured home and I'd just say that that gets a little bit confusing because there is a code that addresses manufactured housing, which is what some people think of because it has the word manufactured and that's what mobile homes used to be. That is a different section. Manufactured housing is, they are HUD compliant homes, but they're built on a chassis that is meant to be moved. And it could be titled like a vehicle could be titled. Industrial housing or modular housing, it is pre-manufactured because it's built somewhere else and then it's brought on site. That is regulated by a different type of, it's our codes. They're the international building codes that apply to those types of homes, not the HUD code compliant or federal housing requirements. So this home, this modular building that's being, is built to the city specs and will comply with all of the cities adopted international building codes.
Thank you. Remember Camp Car?
John, can we pull back to the slide with the plan that had the drainage flows and yeah, there we go. I just want to make sure. So this is only for one structure or industrial home? This is not?
Yes, this is an 11-acre site which will have one home on it, this home.
Let me ask a question. If somebody changes their mind and they want to put 15 industrial homes, do they-
They would have to come back for a new CUP and present before this body.
And how is that enforced? We're going to go inspect once a year? We're going to go and-
I think it'd be like any, I mean, right now you have, this property could pull a trailer on it or could put anything that's a CUP use in the property. We, we see that through our driving around, through code enforcement, through citizens noticing things and letting us know. But every property in Pearland is open to some violation that we're not going to catch necessarily right away.
Member Camp Car, if I can interject, I would say that unlike the manufactured homes that are built on a chassis, industrial or modular homes are built on a foundation. And I just, I shouldn't say I can't imagine, but I would say that almost every developer who comes in knows that when you run the electric line, you have to get a permit. Knows that when you put the plumbing in, you have to get a permit. So as soon as Community Development sees a permit application, they'll do their compliance review. And when they do that compliance review, they'll see whether or not the zone has plating that supports multiple houses and whether it has the zoning to support multiple houses.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Any other questions, comments? Good questions. Seeing none, we'll call this public hearing to adjournment. Moving to new business item number one. Member Coza, would you place number one on the, on the table, please? Remember Coza, would you place number, new business item number one?
Resolution of the City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, approving conditional use permit for dwelling industrialized home, used on approximately 11 acres, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We've had staff report as well as application or questions, comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving to consent agenda, I've had two items. C is in Charlie, G is in Gulf to be moved. Are there any other items to be removed? Seeing none. Member Camp Car, would you present consent agenda with the exceptions of C and G? Not yet. Oh, hang on one second. No, we'll do it when we do see. Member Camp, Member Coza has to remove himself on one of these. We'll do that when we get to it, just after consent.
So items C and G?
C and G.
Consideration possible action, approval of the consent agenda with the exceptions of items C and G, so moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero for consent agenda items A through N with the removal of C and G.
All right. Thank you for that. If there's no objection from council, I'd like to move C and G up. And the reason is, two reasons. Remember, Coza just needed to recuse himself on one, so we just need a dispense of it. There was no question on it. And G was pulled, but we have consultants here, so we don't keep the consultants here any longer than we have to. We can dispense of that if that's okay. Y'all's concurrent. Remember, Camp Car, you have a question? Okay. All right. So with that, Member Coza, would you make your statement for C? I know you have to remove yourself.
Yes. American Materials is a customer of my company and it's been for about 30 years, so I need to remove myself from this vote.
With that, Member Carbone, would you present item C?
Consideration possible action resolution R 2022-123, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item for us to purchase road paving materials from American Materials. It's through an interlocal agreement with Brazoria County. We use these asphalt materials for the actual road repairs that Brazoria County does through us, through the, through the interlocal, as well as any in-house repairs that we do. It's in the estimated amount of $307,241.24.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Mr. Epperson, where are they going to apply these materials? Where are we going to, where's the paving going to get put in place?
So this year with our interlocal agreement, Brazoria County will be redoing O'Day Road, Veterans and Old Alvin.
Thank you.
And I believe they're due to start here first of July. So it'll be a summertime, summertime of hot asphalt. All right. So yeah, might melt out there is right. I don't think they'll have to heat it up. Just put it in the truck, right? All right. With that, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. With that, I'd like to present G. Would you, Member Hernandez?
Yes, sir. Mayor, consideration possible action resolution number R 2022-128, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We'll go into staff report. I'm always asking to move it up because we have consultants on the payroll, so I want to make sure that we move them on. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is to update our impact fees. We have to do that every five years, at a minimum every five years. So impact fees, they are used, they are paid by new development and they're used to partially offset the cost to provide capacity in our water and sewer systems or that new development. The purpose is to reduce the cost of providing that expanded capacity on the existing ratepayers. So this study will update the fees and all the assumptions that go into those fees. And then we will bring that study back to council for adoption in March of '23. That's all, Mayor.
Member Hernandez, you asked for this to be pulled, so-
Yes, Mayor. So I just had maybe one or two quick comments on this. For the bid and award, I see this is staff utilized cities qualification-based selection process. Can you just give me a little bit more of an overview of that process versus more of a traditional bid process, just so I can understand?
So this is an engineering contract. So under, under the Texas statutes, professional services have to be selected based on qualifications. So we have a qualification-based selection process in this particular instance with Freeze Nichols background with our water or our wastewater modeling and that they've done all of our impact fee studies in the, in the past three iterations at least. They've got a basis of knowledge and qualifications beyond other firms. So determine them to be the most qualified firm to do this work.
Okay. I think that's probably the, why is it this juncture, given that we just saw this presentation right before tonight's meeting? It seems like they do have intimate knowledge of a lot of things going on, which would be definitely a positive here. To what degree will this play into those, offsetting those rate models we were looking at earlier for the water reclamation facilities that we're talking about? Is it, to what degree would this be factored into those models? I'm just kind of curious. This is all said and done.
I'll give a quick answer and then see if anyone has anything better to add, Robert. Basically, we take into account a 10-year CIP and then we look at what portion of that is expanded capacity to serve future development and then the, and the cost associated with that. And then the, the state law for, for utilizing impact fees makes you reduce that amount by half. So we can only charge half of that amount as impact fees to new development.
Okay. It's, I, I know in the past, I've received quite a few comments from our business community specifically that our impact fees were really kind of difficult to calculate and they were surprises. And I think we've moved away from that. I think we've done a way better job of being more transparent there. And I'm hoping that this will provide even more transparency as far as how it impacts the actual rate models, but also as, you know, as far as our business community, if you want to open the business here, what to anticipate. I think we're moving in the right direction here. This was just something that I've heard a lot of input from the community on the past. So I just wanted to kind of bring this forward for general clarification purposes, so.
Sure. And I think to address that specific concern, we use a, a chart of uses, like different types of uses to calculate the impact fees based off an equivalency to a single-family residence. And part of this study, this go-around, we're going to look at that, that, that table and do some expansion of that table because we do have some uses that come in that are hard to fit in a particular category. So we've got, we've got it, it's more transparent as usual.
Yeah. And I think the, the, I always get this wrong. Is it open counter? Is that? Yeah, okay. I got it right for a change. I think that's also, now it includes kind of the anticipated impact fees on there as well, which I think is really very useful. And so the more we can do to expand upon that transparency, I think is just going to be better and better and better. Give us more of a business-friendly reputation rather than I think where we have been in the past. So I appreciate all the work towards this. And I think Freeze Nichols is probably very well qualified for this. I just want to get a little bit of info on the process and things for future. Thank you. Any other questions? Member Camp Car?
Mr. Epperson, I don't know if this is a, Mr. Epperson question or Epperson question, but what is our current rate on a white water and wastewater connection in the residential space?
So with that, it's a combined total of $6,477 and that's 50%. So when we did this back in 2018, and that actual cost is a little over, almost $13,000. But as Mr. Epperson stated, as per the local government code 395, is that do we opt to take 50% value associated and charge that to the new growth with the remaining balance being covered through the rates charged to existing customers?
If Mr. Hernandez wouldn't have pulled this, I would have. I just want to put out there for the record, there was a neighboring jurisdiction that used the same firm and had a very contentious discussion on impact fees. Local developers needed to get involved. The number went essentially six times what it was at the start of the year to where it is today. And so as we're going there, there, there's a certain amount of equitableness and fairness and that just didn't happen. And the study didn't stand up to scrutiny. The staff never rebutted any of the, the items that were brought up and it was a binder this thing. So I just want to put out there on the record what the, what the rate is today and what it, what it is and what is the recommendation that shows up, you know, a year, you know, nine months, a year from now. And if that number is the absolute maximum number, there's probably a problem. So I just want to make sure that we emphasize what are the needs and how are we funding those needs? Because essentially, member, not member, Mr. Cochrane, the impact fee is to pay for capital improvements, right? It's essentially an offset. This is not, in theory, a money-making endeavor. Okay? And so I just want to make sure that's out there because this item dragged out for about two months in a very close neighboring jurisdiction. Now they're at a very different phase of development than we are. They're, they're probably on the first third of their city. We're probably in the somewhere past 75% or 80%. So I just want to put the context out there.
Well, Councilman Camp Car, we've been doing impact fees since 1996. It was our first one that started. We ran multiple impact fees in conjunction. So the Shadow Creek Ranch, during their early phases of development, had an impact fee that was different than the city. And then two iterations ago, so about 10, I'd say about eight years ago, they combined them back into one. So the city is under one impact fee. Those are, those are locked in by the time of plat. That's why we have them for as long as we have. So sometimes we have to go back to that 1996 study, depending on when the plat was originally done and any changes there to that development. So it, some of those impact fees are back at the original start of the time. Some of those, if they replat, get under the new, new impact fees. As Mr. Epperson stated, is that we need to do this at a maximum of no more than five years. That's required by state law. So that's why we're trying to minimize it and go as long as we can to minimize that. But yes, I'm aware of what you're talking about. We scrutinize it very, very well to be able to do that and to stay within the 10-year projects that are there, making sure that those benefits are for growth and watch what is done and then also what has also fallen off.
I appreciate the additional color. This city has been around for a long time. We don't have the same needs as the other jurisdiction, but I would just say the study didn't hold up in that other jurisdiction. And I know we'll put more scrutiny on a reasonable number. So I appreciate the team's efforts on that.
Good questions. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Moving to new business continued. Items two, three, and four have been requested to move to June the 27th since we have our, our financial advisor advise today. We've got some volatility in the bond market today. Probably best for us to pull this back and then come back to the bond market in two weeks. And he's not here tonight, I don't believe. I don't think we actually move forward with any of our biz. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. And if there's anything to add, Amy has been in contact with, with John today.
Okay. So those will be moving to, to a future agenda. So that lands us on new business item number five. Member Little, would you present it, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2022-129, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Mud 509 was created in 2007 with the start of Riverstone Ranch. It's been expanded multiple times over the years to other developments that are detailed in, in the agenda request. This will add the 110-acre residential plan development at State Highway 35 and Bailey Road that was recently approved. There's no city rebate for this annexed area as part of the mud. And I believe we've got their legal and financial reps here if there's any questions.
Questions, comments from council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Perfect. Also, just a quick housekeeping. New business item number 10 at the bottom of our agenda has also been moved to a future agenda. One of the, by the actual requister, Member Coza, his second is also not here tonight. So requested it to be moved to a future agenda, most likely the 27th of June. So you're here for that item. Just want to make sure that you're aware that it's, it's being moved. Coming back around, item number six. Mr. Coza, would you present that, please?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2022-124, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a contract to be awarded for road construction services. As part of our annual road program, we work with Brazoria County, as we mentioned earlier, and that, and that purchase of asphalt. We do in-house work and then we also contract outwork. So this is part of the contracted work and this will award a contract to tandem services in the amount of $807,810. The scope is to make base repairs where they're needed plus a mill and overlay of all the streets in the Garden Acres subdivision. So that includes Gardenia, Laura, Lazy, Bend and Thelma Streets. It's scheduled to take about five months. And tandem was the low bidder and has a positive history of working with the city on multiple projects. So we recommend award.
So this is in addition to the three projects that we're doing with the county?
That's correct.
O'Day, Veterans and Old Alvin is being handled under that interlocal. This is being done in addition to all that?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Questions, comments from council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Back around to Mr. Camp Car. Could you present item seven, please? Sorry, caught you.
Delicious almond joy. So, yes, sir. Consideration possible action resolution R 2022-135, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a professional service agreement with a garver for project management services in the estimated amount of $1,047,800. So based on our current project volume and our capital improvement program, plus all the PERs that we're doing in preparation for the drainage bond and the other bond programs, and that we've got a couple of current vacant positions- and that we've got a couple of current vacant positions, created a need for this staff augmentation. Additionally, we've got Skipper Jones, he's going to retire here upcoming soon, and you know, he's our assistant director over capital projects. Not only does he oversee that group of project managers, he's also been leading the efforts on the surface water treatment plant. So we're going to be able to bring him back in part-time under this to help us finish that surface water treatment plant. But instead of working 60 hours a month, or a week, we'll only get about 30 hours out of him a week. So we've done this in the past, when our project volumes exceed our internal capacity, we've augmented our staff for project management, construction management inspections, and so this is very similar. We're working with Garver, who we've been working with over the past few years, under a master service agreement. So we've used them to manage some other projects over the past two to three years, and so this is basically an extension of that work. So as we get through the peak of that activity, and get our permanent project managers on board, then we'll be able to scale this back. But this estimated cost is to bring on two full-time project managers, as well as a part-time project manager for the surface water plant, and for the next year, and then we'll assess where we are at that point.
Questions, comments?
Just, yeah, so I think there's a part in here that says we'll only pay for the hours that we use, correct? This is not, we're committing to a million dollars for three people, two full-time, one part-time?
That's correct. So, you know, we've got them scheduled, two part, two full-time, one part-time, and that estimate's based on, we use all those hours throughout the entirety of the year. If we backed off on that, then we would only pay for what we use.
Okay. And what, what do you anticipate?
Right now, I anticipate we will use all of this. And then one thing I failed to mention is then, whatever projects they're working on, the cost, or the cost of that will be allocated to that project. So it's the same way we allocate our costs for our project management staff that's in-house. We allocate that across all of the projects, so same thing here, is we'll allocate those costs to the individual projects.
I see, okay.
So based on the full value of this contract, we don't anticipate filling those vacancies within the next year?
No, I mean, we're actively looking to fill those vacancies, but I think through this period where we've got the PERs and a lot of these other projects going on at the same time, and getting those people trained up, we'll, we'll need most of this likely for the next year.
Is there a shortage of qualified engineers in the marketplace?
So we don't have a requirement for engineers to be project managers, but there is a shortage of qualified project managers right now in the industry. We're struggling to find qualified people, and then it's, they're very expensive. Yes, sir.
And Camp Car?
Robert, are these three folks, or two and a half folks, all dedicated to the water plant, or they spread somewhere in between?
No, only the part-time individual will be allocated to the surface water treatment plant to complete that project to the end. The other two individuals will be embedded full-time into staff, and they will be on facilities, water, wastewater, streets, drainage. Each of them have their project management experience, will be utilizing them to the full deal on all projects. They will be assigned in individual, several individual projects to manage and operate.
I have a lot of, a lot of heartburn for two and a half people. I understand, we, hiring is tough. I'm looking for qualified people, but this is like a big number in my mind. Is this including reimbursements for cars, or vehicles, or food, or anything else? Is this just engineering dollars allocated to engineering time, or is there other elements inside this number?
This is their salary plus the markup associated with them, and that's it. They arrive and come to the site as if that, their job, their office is our office. And so they're, they are to arrive at the city.
So there's no additional cost above and beyond this?
Would you be opposed to us having an update on this usage six months from now?
I'm not opposed to that, because that'll be in the production of when we get projects moving outside done, trying to move forward.
I'd like to make a motion that there's some kind of reporting, even go on consent of just, this is how much we used, or this amount of time. I'd like to make a motion to that, that we amend that there's a reporting six months from now on the status of usage.
I don't know if I'm ready to second that just yet. I just generally think that this just seems a big, like a big number for two and a half people. I'm struggling, what would we normally pay? I mean, it says it's comparable if we were to hire a project manager. I mean, what would a project manager normally bet on the open market? I mean, is it?
So.
300?
What did you say, Trent? Sorry. So our, our salary, based on the most recent comp and class study, our salary range for a project manager ranges from $62,000 to $84,000 at midpoint, to $102,000 at the very top end, very top end. So with that, we're looking at the project managers in that 64 to 75 range. We're not finding them, and we're also competing. There is a shortage out there of project managers that are qualified, and companies are paying 30, 40% premiums for them, and they're swapping around. And we're just not able to compete right now at this moment to get in qualified, qualified project managers at this time.
So even if we paid them, you know, more than double, let's say 150 each, I mean, that's three, and you know, for a part-time person, let's say 400 total, or 375, something like that, would still seem like it would be above and beyond what the market rate is. This seems triple that even, that, just having difficulty wrapping my brain around.
So we're working through an engineering firm like this, and somebody aware, you know, you've got your, they'll take their raw rate, and then they use a multiplier on top of that to come up with what, you know, they'll charge for, or their time. And so that's what we're looking at here, you know, they're covering all their, you know, their, their benefits and all those different things on top of that. So when you, when you bring in someone from the outside to do this work, just like in the past when we've done it with construction managers or construction inspectors, you're looking at a very similar multiplier to that, that raw rate. And that's what we looked at, to see whether or not this was where it should be in the market.
Robert, if this was, I'm just going to throw it out there, if this was rejected tonight, what would, what would happen? What would we need to do? Because obviously, we have projects that need to move forward, what do we need to do?
You want me to give you the gloom and doom?
Yeah.
I smile, when I smile when I say that, and it's a, currently with staff, I have staff members that are running 15 to 20 projects right now, and so you have attention. Projects are moving fast. If you don't move forward, then with example for the surface water treatment plant, most qualified person I have is not available anymore. And I have no one else on staff to be able to pick that up unless you look at me, to pick that up and run that project. Trying to meet the other requirements associated with the bond program, with finishing those PERs, getting them vetted, making sure that they get accurate numbers back, all those items need to have detailed and attentive attention to it. Having two additional project managers while we're looking for more staff, those two could easily be running, as they're experienced, running eight, 10 projects, get those gone, and get ourselves back square, dealing with our current construction projects right now to get those done, finished, and over the hurdle, working with our construction managers, getting our contractors paid, consultants paid, moving forward. Worst-case scenario potentially is, is if you say no, and I use that caveat just in my opinion, is that we may have to postpone stuff. I need to have attention to that detail.
Is there anyone from Garver here?
Yes, sir, I have a gentleman by the name of Wade Parks.
Obviously, you can hear, we've got heartburn over this number. Are you good with that number? Are you good with us rejecting this tonight?
So I think one of the things, maybe Robert can put a little bit of this in perspective, is the value of the projects that, between these three people, we would be, would be managed. I don't know if you can put a quick ballpark number on that, but it's, you know, the, the cost to manage these things is typically a very small portion of the soft cost, which is a portion of the overall construction cost.
And it's just the heartburn of ultimately what that multiplier is. Sure, we could pay double our rate, we've got benefits on top of that, and we're still going to come in way below this if we can find the person. And I fully understand what the market is right now, and I think that's what you're hearing, we're three people for a million dollars, or actually, two and a half people for a million dollars. And even in increasing all of that, and paying for bennies, and even a vehicle, we're still not going to approach half of this number. So I'm having a hard time understanding the multiplier and, and what we get for that multiplier. Obviously, it's profit to the firm, and they've got benefits, and they've got all of that, but it's, that, that's, these are our rate payers. This is, for the most part, it's going to go into the individual projects. I would assume, Robert, that individual projects, the project line item will be paying for this. So you're not going to see a million-dollar line item anywhere in any one given project. You're going to see 100,000 here, 50 here, 75 there, 200 here, all adding up to what this number's going to be over some time.
Correct. So broken upon eight different projects in different phases, you may see 6 or 7%, 10% of that value to each of those projects for the year. It would be the similar, an aspect is that if you break down our current project manager's time, is that they budget that, but because of the number of projects, you may only see 1, 2%, but we're managing many projects at once. With regards to the Garver's rate, as what Mr. Epperson stated, is their base rate times their multiplier of 3.15. And that's the industry, industry's running between right around 293 to 2 through 234, 3.4. I mean, so we beat them down, you know, from a higher rate coming down to where they are, knowing that they'd be staged at our, at our place. But that's with their, their overhead, their profit, their administrative staff, billing staff, et cetera. All that through adds into that, as we deal with any consultant, when we hire them to do any design project, the difference you're looking at is that you're embedding staff versus hiring a consultant to do a single job. We're hiring a consultant to help us do, if we say eight per person, plus the one being fully dedicated to the surface water plant, you could be looking 16, 17 projects to help us out.
Here, I feel like I opened up the box here a little bit, but I'll say this, probably need to have Skipper, and that's the part that's like, we all know is like this critical path. He's the only person that's been constant. The guy who is the deputy, I think recently passed away unexpectedly at the same time, you know, like, the budget last year that was approved was $100 million, and this is obviously 1% of that budget, but it's on two and a half people's, but the other side of that, and I have to give deference, if we hired five people, they would never come off the payroll, ever. And that's the balancing act, right? Is this one year and that they're gone?
Yeah.
At a very high-leverage time?
Yeah.
Or is it, do we go hire the four or five people that maybe we can't find, and we pay wages and bennies for God knows how long? And that's that unfortunate balancing act.
Yeah. Well, I just, you know, I'm just having a hard time understanding plus or minus a half a million dollars that just leaves, never comes back. And I think that's, we're all having that heartburn.
Disrupting my, and if I can't get a second, again, I'm happy to come and review this six months from now. It's still a heart-attack-like number, but the reality is, we need somebody to manage that plant, and we've got so many things that are jiggering, we're on our second or third change order due to timing. I'm, I would like to just give oversight six months ago, six months in the future, and then if the number is way used up or way underutilized, we throw the book at somebody, but if not, if I can't get a second, I'll just, we either go up or down and see what happens, I guess.
There would be some modified version of approving a different amount, and then coming back, I don't know, but.
They're going to tell you they can't negotiate.
Anyway, this gentleman here said he was here to help, so I'm curious what you were going to say after that statement.
Sure. By the way, I'm Wade Parks, I'm with Garver. Prior to my time with Garver, I actually spent three years of staff augmentation at the city of Houston. So I personally managed $250 million of capital projects, and that's kind of rolled into my technical experience as well. The value that I've seen is similar to what Mr. Upton, Mr. Epperson shared, is that it's intended to be a short-term fuse, and, you know, really, the two, of the staff members that we've proposed are from this area, are citizens, one of them is a citizen of the city of parentland. So you can kind of think that that's reinvesting into the city as well. These are employees that we're, we have for the long term, but y'all just need for the, to get y'all through this, to support people like Jameson and Robert.
Assuming we approve this, are you putting engineers in these positions? And so what level of experience, how many years of experience do they have?
Both of them have over a decade of experience.
Engineers.
One is a, is an engineer, one is just a senior project manager. He's not a licensed engineer.
And a person with 10 years' experience in that area, what range of salary they usually make, if that's not too personal of a question?
Is the, could you rephrase your question? I'm sorry.
Approximately, what's the salary range for someone with 10 years of project experience? Project management experience?
It's kind of like what Robert was saying, it varies widely, but I've had.
100,000 plus benefits?
Very, very easily. I've had offers rejected for similar roles for $100,000.
Okay, even if it was 150, we're looking at 300,000 plus benefits, like my old councilman next to me, I have a hard time wrapping my head around one over a million dollars. Seems like there's a gigantic margin in this contract.
It's not.
Three, four times.
You know, I'd kind of reiterate what, what Robert said. What we, what we did as far as our multiplier was really just try to get close to 10% profit. We're not, you know, contractors are having a lot more, basically, what we're putting at risk is that employee being here full-time, us not being able to provide some of the services that Garver normally would with that staff. So it's, the city did a good job in trying to beat down and get that to a very comfortable level, but really, that's, that's, that low profit is, you know, for us to bear that risk of that employee.
So if I understand, I'm sorry, 120 times two, plus half of that for a part-time, that's 60. That's 30, that's, that's 300,000. And then you got benefits on top of that, times 10% is way below. I understand, he said we try to make 10%. Well, no, your multiplier is your profit. That's, that's the profit. I mean, and these, and these employees are working directly with us, so I'm not sure what Garver behind the scenes is doing, other than sending us a bill on a monthly basis. Because these employees are using our invoicing system on projects that they're working on, not Garver's, ours. We're housing them, so, yeah, you're right, you, you take 300,000 times 3.1, and you're at 900-plus thousand, and then you do your 10% on top of that, and that's how you got to the million. Somewhere, there's $600,000 that's going to the bottom line of Garver. And again, if, if, if Garver is billing all of our subs and everything else, that'd be one thing, but they're not. These employees are using our billing system, right? And, and, I mean, part of me wonders if we shouldn't just have a direct contract with, with the part-timer, and, and we roll our dice on the other. Again, it, it, it's a large sum of money that's just going to go to Garver, and I'm, I'm questioning what services we're getting for that half a million dollars or whatever on the multiplier.
Is this going to the water, wastewater, or is this coming out of general fund?
Going to the project.
No, but what, but who's, it's like the surface water plant where the part-timers coming.
Water and sewer, right.
And the other guys are going to be in the general fund?
It will be according to whatever project they're assigned to.
They're assigned to, so, got it.
So it's, it's CIP side, CIP side, it's going to be a mix.
So, I know, I know that it was looked at, or whether we could do something direct on the surface water plant, and I think just the, you know, providing the, the insurance you have to, to start up something like that was, was cost prohibitive, as well as, you know, being able to provide, and I'm not talking about the health insurance, just the insurance to run the business on top of all the normal benefits. So I know that was prohibitive for, for moving in that direction.
Well, I mean, I've got the same heartburn. You said the high end of the, the project manager's 102, and we're getting 60 hours a week out of him, and now we're going to run into a consultant, pay 370K to get 30 hours a week? I mean, well, and let's.
I mean, well, let's back off our insurance requirements of him or figure something out. But I mean, everybody up here, we know we need Skipper, but we don't need to pay an extra 270 to a consultant to run Skipper through just for insurance? And I mean, you're at the podium, connect the dots here, but especially as it relates to Skipper. We're saying, here's a part time guy we want to hire, we give him to you and you multiply him by 3.15 and send him back. What are we missing?
Yeah. So I, I do kind of want to not, not correct you, Mayor, but kind of piece together the, the math that you're trying to run out. So the markup, that 3.15 includes that 10%. We're not adding 10% on top of that. Within that 3.15, that's our Garver's overhead and expense. That's us having insurance to meet the city's requirements for insurance. And there's, there's a lot of good cases that y'all make. You know, that's, that's the difficulty of staff augmentation is that you're paying a little bit more of what you would normally pay a design consultant to design a project where you get a service or product. But the, the benefit that you get is the short term service. That's, that's really what it is. But we're not, like I said, we're, we're not seeking or trying to gain a lot of profit. Like I said, with our discussions with Robert, our, our profit is, is very low. You know, as far as what we would want to try to achieve with us being efficient with a design project.
So for roughly, I'll just use a $600,000 figure because when you add up these salaries plus the half, half salary. So for $600,000 on the multiplier, what do we get directly from Garver for that? And I understand you got it. Insurance doesn't cost $600,000 for these three employees. So I know it's a, it's a, it's a piece of it. What other overhead? Because we're housing them.
Yeah. So basically what, what Robert and I talked about, and I can kind of share a little bit what the city of Houston does as far as them housing people. Basically, they take about point one off of the markup. So typically, the city of Houston does a 3.0 markup. And it's, it's a similar system. There's a little bit more dynamicism with Pearland. But basically, the city gets a reduction for the staff sitting in the office, using the computer of the city and using the, breathing the AC and all those amenities. That was kind of the negotiated reduction in the, in the markup. So that, we originally kind of started at 3.25 because we've, we're, we're finding just as much as the city of Pearland to maintain our staff and to meet our, our needs to deliver projects. And so it's, the 3.5 was us taking that into account, reducing it because it's going to be housed. The individuals will be housed at the city and also for us to just have a very bare minimum profit from it.
Darren, what are the, the rules? This is like a professional survey. What are like the rules that, what is the white lines that we're playing in regarding this? We can't go back and say X or Y needs to come off this number. We either have to accept or reject. Where were we on that?
The council can negotiate with Garver on that. I mean, that number can be adjusted downward.
You want to come back or you want to just get it done today? I mean, that's like, that's the, the thing. I mean, we can table it and maybe a number proposal comes back. I mean, I, the heartburn that you get, I get. And the reality is I care about one person that wears a Garver uniform and the other ones, we can take or leave a little bit, but.
That's a question I had. I was just going to ask real quick. How did, how did we choose Garver here?
So with Garver, we, since we already have a, a task order contract, we've used them before. We've used that and we've set that up as a master service agreement. So that's how we utilize that is that contract is in this would just already be a task order associated with that.
If we need to supplement a project for several months or whatever, we, we had, we had a pot of money to go to and, and draw down, correct?
We have a task order where we could pull in and like I said, as you said, and as Mr. Epperson stated is that these projects are funded through the project itself.
So when we did the generator upgrade at the public safety building, Garver provided us a project manager to run that project. And that was one of the task orders, I think, probably came to council for approval at the time, single project.
All right. We've said a lot. What do you guys want to do? Any other questions, comments?
I mean, I want to vote no, but Robert's going to shoot us. Right? I mean, that's, that's the spot that we're in and.
Right.
Two weeks from now.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of like we're, we're backed into this corner and there's not a good way out. And we're staring at staff saying, help us and it's going to cost a million bucks.
It would be, it would be cheaper for us on Skipper alone to whatever that contract is, pay for his insurance. His insurance is not going to be a million dollars a year. Just not. I wish our insurance guy was here tonight. He would tell you. It's just not. And, and that's, that's what I'm getting at is there's, that's 600,000. We're not getting any value for $600,000 leaving our city. That's what we're trying to say. I don't doubt that Garver itself has overhead. But there is nothing coming back to the citizens who are paying that $600,000 for any value whatsoever.
Are the two other personnel besides the part timer set, do we have a name? Have we worked with them before or is this picking out of a hat?
No, we've, we have not worked with them before, but they have been selected. We've looked at their resumes because of their experience, it would be a.
So you have a name and a face and you know who those people are. And if they get changed on you because you changed this contract, you would, you would be upset.
Yeah. Go negotiate and hire them direct. Sorry, but I mean, it's cheaper.
All right. So can I ask from a legal standpoint, with, with TMRS and the, the surface water treatment plant manager? He's now part time. Can we not hire him directly as a consultant?
Which individual?
Skipper.
Oh. Can the city hire?
Right.
This, the city could contract with Skipper directly.
Why? What, what's wrong with that?
Health insurance and insurance as a, as a contractor, what's the issues?
I mean, instead of him getting 120-ish K, can we just pay him 150 for his 30 hours a week? And he makes a little extra and we go on about our day? And we save 370 off this contract?
The city can contract with him and negotiate a price, yes.
You see issues with that, Robert?
As, as you stated and indicated, the only concern is, is that needing to meet our insurance requirements as a consultant, creating whatever LLC or corporation or whatever business shingle, we'll call it that, would be required to isolate that. And what that takes to set that up. So, so it comes down to that. In a personal discussion, I didn't think that there was a desire to be able to try and do that and set that up for just a short period of time, you know, to get that plant. So.
I think if he, if Skipper's listening to this and he knows he can shake his, he can net in his pocket 30 or 40K, I think he'd jump through those hoops to save the city 370. I mean, that's a, that's to me, sounds like a win-win unless I'm just missing something.
It's about $1,500 to set up an LLC.
Right.
I do them all the time.
And, and four days, three days.
The Secretary of State's running a little longer because they can't get qualified people to work. But about no, no more than a week.
Yeah, a week. Yeah. I, and I get, I don't want to make light of the fact that we have other projects that are, that are ending because of this. Possibly we postpone this for tonight. I think we've heard, the staff has certainly heard, come back in two weeks. Does two weeks kill us on any of this?
No.
No, I think we'll be fine. You know, and I know this, it's, it's a big number and it's all at once. And it's, and you're not seeing the projects, it's, it's against.
Yeah. Can you, I was going to ask.
So we can bring some of that additional information back because in the, in the past, I mean, we've approved construction management and inspection contracts well in excess of a million dollars for a single project where we're getting, you know, a construction manager part time and a couple of inspectors, you know, full time on, on some of our major projects. And, you know, similar numbers, I think it's just, you, you see that against the value of the project itself and that it's a cost to get that project done. It gives a better picture and, and under similar circumstances, similar multipliers, similar, you know, they're in the field offices and things like that. So I think we can put some additional perspective around it. We can work on the numbers as, as well and bring something back and try to answer those other questions.
Mr. Epperson?
Yes, sir.
One thing I did want to add for the council is that we hadn't selected the projects partly because of wanting to know, as you said, where we are today in this discussion, what those projects would look like. With that also, just, you know, as we reviewed the individuals and then also where we were in the process of projects as they are too. You know, with PERS, with projects that haven't started yet to get those slated up and started, getting projects complete, moving from design phase to construction phase. So we hadn't penciled up that list yet until we had this discussion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to postpone till the 6:27 meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second to postpone. I don't believe that's debatable. So with that, Madam Secretary, will you call for the vote?
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to postpone item to the next regular city council member meeting on June 27.
All right. Moving to new business item number eight. Where did I leave off? That was, Member Carbone, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1462-4. So move.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is an item that actually originated several council meetings ago when the council considered doing some initial changes to the ethics ordinance dealing with former council members. And then at that time, I was provided direction from the council to go ahead and make a similar change that would affect existing council members. And that, that's the change that's been presented to you this evening. There's some other minor changes, but substantively, that's the, the primary change. Just to clarify, what does this mean, this proposed change this evening? What it, what it, the impact of the change would simply say that the city would not have the ability to enter into a contract with a, a city, a city council member or a business entity in which that council member has a substantial business interest in. And those are defined by state law and referenced in the ordinance. So, and if you're asking, how does that differ from how things are today? And just to clarify that, under today's, today, we currently follow state law essentially. So can the city today enter into a contract with a council member? Or with a business entity in which that council member has a substantial interest? And the answer is yes. That's the way it is. That's the uniform state law across the state of Texas. So this would be going a step beyond and would be a stricter law. The state laws just simply states that if the council's going to enter into a contract of that nature, then the council member would have to file an affidavit with the city secretary. And then they would have to abstain and leave the room during the discussion and vote on that matter. And they couldn't take any action or have any influence, essentially removing it from the discretion of that council member because of their conflict. So this would be going a step beyond that. And that's what the proposed change is this evening. And obviously, I'll be happy to answer any questions as we get into the discussion.
Thank you for that. Open up for questions, comments, concerns from council. Member Coza?
My understanding, Darren, is that it's any contract, so just a simple purchase order from a department head or lower not actually coming to council would be affected by this?
That is correct. When we had the, the discussion on how to bring this back, it was, it was to say that the city could not enter any, any contract. There, I've seen variations where they, it's presented in such a way that, that the city council cannot enter into any contract. And that, that would be items that, of course, that would come before council would be the ones impacted there. But the way it is drafted, this would be across the board at any level of contracting at the city would not be able to enter those contracts.
Okay. The reason I ask is that basically the city kind of throws out there that we want to support local business. The company that I work for has been in business for 57 years. We just celebrated our 57th anniversary about a month ago. And this would impact this, not that anything we do rises to the level to hit councils' desk. Ours are always small POs here and there throughout the city that when we bid on it, there are two other people that the city also has to have. So it's me kind of crossing a line where it's pretty punitive or, you know, someone like myself. So that's my comments.
Any other question? Member Kamkar?
Yes, I just want to first of all, thank Member Perez. He's no longer with us on the council, but this started with him, I want to say, gosh, must be April. In, in trying to do this, I think we've heard a lot of comments about restoring trust to citizens and things of this nature. And I think this kind of thing that he brought up and we built on, I think is really showing that we're trying to go above and beyond to rebuild that trust. Thankful for Member Carbone coming up with that item for us to, to discuss that the, the former members and the present members are in essentially a same level of playing field. So I think this is one of those key steps towards rebuilding trust. And I, I think this is a good item that I'm looking forward to seeing happen.
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, there's a public comment, I guess, asking about taxpayer funded trips for personal gain. I think Mr. Davis was referring to what council going on to a conference, TML or any of the others, and then use that for personal gain. How does that, if any, kind of interact with the ethics ordinance?
Right now, there's, there's really nothing specifically that would address the circumstance that the citizen, the citizen spoke of this evening. Let me see, I'm just, if you'll bear with me, I'm scrolling through the ordinance here. There's nothing directly that's going to address that direct, specific circumstance. And then another thing, it's, it's really hard to, when an individual's traveling at, at a conference like that, for instance, you don't know when they're doing that. I mean, obviously you go to a conference during the day and then in the evening, you know, what you do, you're on your own time. It's, it, those are things that are very difficult and challenging to, to be able to regulate. Obviously, if a council member is going and setting up a booth at a, at a conference and being paid by the city to be there, that would be a different story. But I, I had not looked directly into the circumstances raised this evening, so it'd be speculative at this point.
Thank you. I, I guess the other follow up question is on, I guess, page, page nine of the packet. I guess that'd be what, section 2.283B, the city shall not enter into a contract. So if that says city council, then that would, that would address Member Coza's concern?
Yes. And well, yes. And just to clarify, you know, the statutorily, city charter wise, and also our own city policies, any expenditure that's 50,000 or greater is required to come to the city council. So if this were changed to read that the, the city council shall not authorize any contract with them, then that would, that would basically apply to any contract that's 50,000 or greater. It would not then apply to things that are done at the staff level. And just to clarify there as well, those items that are less than that, cities own policies require that, I believe, at least three, is it three bids? Three quotes are obtained and then pricing is obtained after obtaining those three quotes, assuming that they can at least get three. And then decision is made based upon that information.
I mean, I, I, I hear what Coza's saying. I mean, we, we want to shop local and we want to keep our tax dollars local. And then are Coza's one of the oldest companies in the, in the city from doing business with the city when it doesn't come close? Is, do we have any idea on how much business we do with Coza's, as the city?
Last year, we did about $7,500.
It's, I got to think, it's not going to make or break one side or the other, but just the, I don't know, I can argue both sides. The optics of it is, hey, we can no longer do business with a 50 plus year old. The optics of it is, hey, we can no longer do business with a fifty-plus-year-old company. And the other side is Coza's going to try to redirect more screen prints from the city and jump down the weeds, re-staff levels deep. I don't know. That's, I can I can take, I see both sides of this one.
Darren, if I read this correct, it it's if an entity comes in front, we're looking at the previous twelve months on a given council member? And the reason I I'm only asking this, from time to time, I know in the industry I'm in, the industry that Member Kamkar is in, we may do business with a builder or something like that, you know, in in this given year and five, six years from now, they come knocking on the on the door to do a development here locally, has nothing to do with us, but they're looking to get a development agreement. And and that development's long gone. How does that interface with this? Obviously, it wouldn't be the previous twelve months that you did business with them, but how does that work?
I'm sorry, I was reading chapter one seventy-one as you alluded to that. Could you restate that?
Yeah, so let's let's say that that I'm doing a, I'm trying, I'm just trying to put some feet on how this ordinance would work. So let's say I did a development in another city, Houston, wherever, I sold lots to builder A five, six, seven years ago. Obviously, I had a substantial interest with that builder because of the money that I made in that particular year, three years or four years. And then now, all of a sudden, we find that builder coming here. I don't have anything to do with the development, but I had a relationship with them five, six, seven years ago, and now they're here.
Okay, and just to clarify, so in the statutory references, to define a substantial business interest or a substantial interest in a business entity, it's either owning ten percent or more of the voting stock, so ten percent more of the company, ten percent more or fifteen thousand or more of the fair market value, or funds from the business entity that exceed ten percent of the person's gross income for the preceding one-year period, twelve months. So you have to look at that. So the the situation you described earlier, something that happened five, six years ago, and you you maybe that year, you may have fit into that, you received more than two percent of your gross income that year from that company, but then they come here five, ten years later. This would not be triggered. That being said...
There's other provisions that we have to disclose.
Yeah, you you may have to disclose that and so forth. But the other factor there is if, let's just change the facts a little bit. Let's say that you did that business deal eight months ago. And you you fit into the ten percent gross income exclusion there, then then under the current language, that would definitely prevent the city from contracting with that developer.
Just trying to put some feet around it. Any other questions, comments? Member Coza?
Yeah, Darren, as far as this restriction, where do we land? I mean, you said that the Texas ethics is here. Is this the most restrictive, halfway through, closer? Where do we fall along those lines?
So as I indicated earlier, state law, the 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 approach of state law is to say, disclose, abstain, stay out of it, and don't exercise any discretion or influence. That's sort of the state law approach. This goes farther, and it would be stricter than that state law approach. And and currently, the language, as I indicated earlier, it would apply to all contracts. It would it would be it would be strict.
So more strict than state law?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
I apologize, I did not hear you.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Coza?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
All right, moving to new business item number nine. Member Hernandez, would you present that, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action. First reading of ordinance number one six zero five dash six. So move.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is budget amendment number six, and it is our year-end projection budget amendment. So our budget staff reviews the revenues and expenditures to date with all of our departments to update those projections through the end of fiscal year twenty-two. That allows us to more accurately accurately reflect our financial position and then sets the stage for developing the F Y twenty-three budget. No new allocations or expenditures are being proposed as we recently made significant allocations with budget amendment number five that preceded this. With our F Y twenty-three challenges, we've got cost and wage inflation, property tax revenues down slightly. Other significant needs that we're looking at in the twenty-three budget, such as, you know, fire trucks, the police department's record management management system replacement. All of those things are kind of adding up to where additional allocations, we really recommend those should be looked at holistically with everything that's needed and reviewed with all the needs in the upcoming budget cycle. We do have an early budget input session that's currently scheduled for the twenty-seventh that starts that process. So the only other thing I want to point out is that on exhibit A, we had a data entry area on the error on the P E D C expenses. And instead of the four point five million, it should match what was in budget amendment number five at twenty-eight point one million. And that'll be corrected for the second reading of this item. That's our report, Mayor.
All right, moving to council for questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, moving forward, we've already dispensed of items removed from the consent agenda. There's no other business. As previously stated, mayor council issues, the number ten, council discussion regarding options for transitioning from the adopted thirty-two thirty will be moved to the next agenda. And so with that, we are going to be moving into executive session under Texas government code five five one point zero seven four Personnel Matters. So at this time, we will recess into executive session at seven forty-five.
All right, City Council has returned from executive session at 8:15 PM. With that, we will move to new business item number 11.
Yes, Mayor, and recommend a motion authorizing staff to proceed with hiring a prosecutor as discussed in executive session.
Okay.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, just went out of order. And with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
With that, we are moving to adjournment, but before we do, Leslie, thank you for all that you've done for us. This is your sign-off point for city council meetings. We wish you well in Colorado, glad you're getting to go back home and all of that kind of stuff, so we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, with that, we'll adjourn at 8:17.